Any questions? Now, under Special Presentations, number one, motion to adopt Resolution 201928, Resolution authorizes Wayne County Development Alliance to file a formal application for the North Carolina Rule Center Building Reuse Grant Program for $500,000 for business expansion related to Project Nest. And Mark will be here as well, but as the board is aware, we've been working with the state and Project Nest. This will allow us to go ahead and apply for the grant with the Department of Commerce. This is not an announcement. This has just allowed us to apply for the Building Reuse Grant. And this authorizes WCDAs and Mark, and also authorizes that we will do the 5% match on the half a million dollars. And again, Project Nest is $5.6 million investment and 116 new jobs.
The match, is that coming from us or is it coming from?
That's coming from us, and that would be part of the incentive package that we would work if the company does come.
Okay.
Project Nest, is that NEST, an acronym or something else, or is that the name of the?
That is a project name. Right now, it is a secretive project.
All right, okay. We'll leave you with that.
We cannot make a public announcement until they're ready and the governor is willing to make that announcement.
Did we just let the cat out of the bag?
No, we didn't, no. Can't let it out early.
No, no, I said, did we just let it out?
No, sir.
No, I don't think it has anything to do with birds.
Okay, all right. I just, while a female, I just, we just leave it there.
Number two is Wayne County Development Alliance recruiting video. They've done a really good job working on Public Affairs on that, and WCDAs looking at our shell building, so we'll show that. Presentation, number three, presentation on Medicare D Open Enrollment by ship coordinator Selena Beeman, and that will be under Special Presentations. And then, number four, Special Recognition of Ship Volunteers, Gail Jones and Larry Boyce. Number five is introduction of EMS Director Dave Cutterback, and we're very excited to have Dave here. Dave's been here now a week and two days, and we're very excited to have him onboard, so wanted to make sure that the board and the public met Dave and appreciate what Dave's doing. And then, number six will be the resolution as read by Commissioner Acker. Then we'll have public comments. Then we'll have Appointment Committee. Is there any? Yes, sir. Have Appointment Committee update. Then, under Unfinished Business, number one, discussion of non-emergency transport franchise. As the board is aware, we have been working with UNC, also with our existing staff. We sent out requests for proposals to begin looking at non-emergency transport from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and also all day on Sundays. So, we interviewed two, and with the help of UNC Wayne, we would like to recommend North State Medical Transport. So, what we would be asking for, and Dave will be here as well to make that presentation, but what we will be asking for is approval to begin contract negotiations with North State.
Mr. Chairman. So, we need to wait until the presentation in regards to any questions we might have.
Yes, sir, or if you, I can ask very general questions if you need, or Chip.
Well, I understand that we are contracting between 6:00 and 6:00.
Yes, sir.
And on Sundays.
Yes, sir.
And after 6:00, then that transfers over to Wayne Net.
Yes, sir.
Or is the company allowed to make any transports between the other 6:00 to 6:00?
That's not going to be in the contract. We should be able to handle those non-emergency transport calls during the 6:00 A to 6:00 P.
Out of county.
Yeah, out of county will be done by North State.
So, all out of county?
Right.
The other question I have is evidently, if this contract is negotiated, there will be some staffing change because evidently, we're going to have to reduce our staff. Is that correct?
We are probably able to absorb them back into our regular EMS staff.
Okay. I tell you, we reviewed it and found that our out-of-county transport is not financially feasible.
Financially feasible.
Is that why we're settling for that?
Also, our staffing levels as well. It's taking out EMS ambulances from night. So, we were having, because there's a multiple transports out of county, and we were having staffing issues, so by doing that, it would take an EMS ambulance off the road and have them transport. So, we wanted to make sure that we stayed true to our priority, which is EMS, not medical transport. So, we want to make sure that those units were here, remaining in the county.
Well, I think we were all concerned in regards to the cost of Wayne Net to our county budget, and I think you all are recommending this to address that.
That first step.
The first step.
First step. And we've had some conversations with Dave as well in looking at it long-term and seeing what's in the best interest of the county.
And then, one last question, that is, have we analyzed the trips between our 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM?
Yes.
To see in regards to our staffing and our investment in Wayne Net, whether or not that financially turns us into the black?
And again, that's the second step. That's the second step, but what we're doing is making sure, you know, especially when we can move our staffing where they need to be during the day now. Again, it's the first step. The biggest issue that we've had is the out-of-county transports, especially at night. So, this is the first step, and then we're going to work with Dave and work with staff and see what's making sure that we are profitable. Then, public comments? Oh, I'm sorry. We, under unfinished business, then we got Consent Agenda, applications for elderly or disabled exclusions. We have a number of those that have been reviewed by staff, and during the agenda review, there were no issues. Number two, applications for disabled veteran exclusion. Again, no issues that we saw. Number three, application for present use value, no issues that we saw. Number four, application for property tax exclusions. Everything looked fine and in order. And number five is budget amendments, and that I will turn up to Ms. Allison.
And it is for the CDBG Disaster Recovery Grant. This is not new funds. This is re-appropriated funds from the end of the fiscal year at June 30, so we are bringing those forward. There's a memo behind that one. For the library, they have received a grant in the amount of $3,500 from the State Library of North Carolina, and this will be used for health literacy programs and education. And you see a detailed budget amendment, number 131 on page 42. We do this every year. This is for our merit increases that have been given to employees. That is budgeted in one line item during the original budget, and then when actual merits are done, we allocate it out to the department. So, that's what this budget amendment is doing. There's no new money being assigned or anything like that. It's just a reallocation. And we do have a breakdown attached of the general fund merits. No, I'm sorry. They actually have a breakdown attached of all the merits by fund behind that on pages 44, 45, and 46. Are there any questions on that one? I know that one's a little bit, that's one we only do once a year. For IT, we have a request to reallocate $26,334 from the special project line item to capital outlay for vehicles. This is a budget request that was made during the original budget process. It was not approved, but they have since had continuous maintenance issues on this vehicle. We have also, Ryan Preble with our IT department also did have Kendall write a letter. Those are all on your tables in front of you, and you received it in email stating the different issues they've had and Kendall's recommendation for this vehicle. And Ryan is also here if you have any other questions aside from what you have in front of you.
Yes, ma'am. I guess maybe my first question was, was why was it taken out of the original budget request? And if it was because we wanted to trim down, maybe that's the answer. The second one was, I would wonder what kind of fuel leak that would either be non-fixable or initially not observable when you're talking about fuel? And so, you got a gas tank or gas line, and in the old days, it would have been incorporated, but I notice a lot of other stuff now. I was curious that if it was something that could be fixed internally, that we don't have automotive vendors around Goldberg that could fix a fuel leak?
To my knowledge, it has been sent out, and they still can't find the problem. I think it's an '07 as well, so it is a 12-year-old vehicle. And again, Kendall's looked at it multiple, multiple times and just cannot find.
And I understand internally, we've had someone look at it.
But I think certainly, we have had it looked at as well.
But I was wondering if dealers who's got the diagnostic and the history, sometimes when you're trying to look at vehicles since 1989, it's going to take data from the dealers to be able to understand exactly what the analyzers are telling you. So, if we don't have that internally, that was just something brought to my attention since. I do have some old vehicles, and I do have some history with those. And when I saw this, not to belabor this, but I have a '02 Cadillac that one dealer told me that, I was saying, we can take it, take it home and park it. And it stayed parked for a couple of years, and then I found an independent dealer who had the analyzers and the automotive background, and they went and put a $150 part on it, charged me about $150 later. The car went back to running like it always did to include getting inspection passed. I don't want to belabor this, but most of the time, vehicles can be fixed, and unless, I would just wonder if any kind of a fuel leak, and that means that you would have seen something dripping or leaking, something that is visible, you know? And if something is a leak, should be visible, therefore, the originating place should be able to be found. I just.
Can we say, Acker?
It says right here in the notes that it's been to the Ford dealership to see if the county had missed anything. So, it's been to a dealership, I mean. And you can fix, and you can fix any.
Sometimes you have to go to more than one dealer.
You can fix anything. You can go to the woods and drag one out. If you've got enough money, you can fix it. I mean, the point is.
I just want to make sure that we had gone to all elements, Mr. Acker, not that I'm unaware that we could probably take a piece of hay bale and wire and fix some things. Some things we can't. So, that was my question.
Mr. Chairman.
All avenues.
How many miles on this vehicle?
510.
How much?
510.
Need S07? Yeah. So, we, it wouldn't take a lot for us to put in repair costs what the value of the vehicle is if we haven't already done that.
We've put about $2,500 in the last month in it. It's a $6,000 truck.
When you use that, well, let me interject this. When you use that as an argument about the value of something, it sort of becomes subjective because if you use the age of a vehicle and some certain dollar amount that wasn't put in context, you could ask yourself, why would somebody remodel a 1930 T model, okay? Because you could fact then the age, it won't worth doing it. I mean, some of, I've dealt with vehicles all my life, so tell them, I know that you can decide that it's got too many miles on it, it's too old, but in this day's market, any reputable dealer will tell you 106,000 miles is not necessarily a number of miles that you would go put in the trashcan, because these vehicles are designed to run a lot more miles than that. If we're talking about a leak, we're not talking about the engine knocking, but the rear end torn up, okay? We're talking about a leak. I'll leave it at that.
The bottom, sorry, the bottom line of my vehicle, I mean, we have a number of vehicles. We've had a number of issues that came to us second-hand from WCDAs when we moved Scott over. We've had a number of issues. Most of our folks don't like driving because it's either got a gas smell in it or, you know, has some other.
I appreciate that, but that's why I say, a leak is something supposed to be invisible. I wouldn't want to drive a vehicle that was leaking and could get set on fire myself. That would be unsafe and unwanted. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Source of revenue that we want?
The source of revenue? That is a reallocation from special projects. We had a sort of a small pot of money set aside last year for, well, I mean, it was approved in the original budget. It wasn't anything that, I mean, we had it in the original budget, but it was for projects. It was for if we had to hire a consultant or something like that, we wouldn't have to go to fund balance immediately. So, in IT, well, Ryan Preble was our special project manager. That was not all used last year, so he requested to use it for this purpose, so we would not have to use fund balance. That's the explanation behind that reallocation.
Thank you, you just hit the key word. It's not coming out of fund balance.
No, sir.
Okay. So, what type of vehicle is this going to be?
I'm sorry.
What type of vehicle is it? Get your statement.
Ford, what brand?
It's a Ford, yeah.
F-150?
Yes, sir. On state contract, right. It's, the new one's like '28, something like that.
I'm just explaining the difference between a sedan and open truck or a cab truck.
For us, the only thing we like, we have is, we're always putting equipment in the back, and we, in the past, and even in my experience, when we have a sedan, we end up putting some in the backseat and end up tearing the backseat because we don't have enough room in the trunk. So, like, when we bought the Escape last year off the $20,000 that we got earlier before, we just have that trunk, so we can throw everything in the back. We have, you know, dusty computer equipment or old equipment that we're either taking to landfill or moving to different storage buildings and whatnot. So, it keeps it off the backseat, in my experience, that's the easiest way to do it. So, we're just replacement truck for a truck.
Ms. Chairman, very briefly. I think my concern here is that we just passed the budget, and this is the second vehicle that's been added after the budget approval. This just didn't happen overnight. This evidently has been an ongoing problem.
Right.
And I wish we would address it during budget time, and that'll be the end of my comment. Thank you.
And going back to Mr. Cromartie's statement, why was it not budgeted before we were cutting the budget? I thought we were at a point that it could last another year, and I was wrong.
Okay, the other, Ms.?
So, on page 50 is a budget amendment for the staff attorney's office, and these line items are balanced by an incoming revenue. The additional expenditure you see is balanced by an incoming revenue. So, if he sells more properties than what he anticipated, that's balanced by him expecting to be reimbursed from those foreclosure fees. And he has a memo behind that.
Ms. Chairman. Yes. I only have one question. Who signed that? Mr. A, evidently. Look at the signature. I was trying to break the ice here. But happy birthday, Andrew.
It kind of resembles mine.
You're an attorney, not a daughter.
That is a good point.
One thing before we move on, Allison, if you'll kind of explain the breakdown of who gets all that money, which I never knew, or you can do it.
I can.
I was surprised.
For these two specific line items, so we sell the property for the amount that's past due, so property taxes plus the legal fees, cost of advertising, it's all that we recoup. Anything that's over that amount, so say, for example, that amount's to $10,000 on a piece of property, and we end up selling it for about $50,000. That surplus funds, we're actually not entitled to those because we don't own the property. So, that stays with the clerk of court, and then the property owner or lien holder, depending on who has priority, they have to petition the clerk to get that money back. So, when you see surplus funds, that means we've sold a property for quite a bit of money, and I can probably tell you, in November, there's going to be another probably budget amendment, because we're going to have, there's two or three properties coming down for sale that I think are going to go for a lot of money, so that line item will probably increase dramatically. But we do recoup all of our property taxes, and then if the property owner actually doesn't claim those surplus funds, they sheet to the state, so after about a year, if nobody claims it, the clerk has to give it over to the state.
That was the part I didn't want. I know it's my fault.
Yeah, so.
So, we do all the work the state gives them.
That's right.
Usually. It's very, it actually doesn't happen that much, so the property owner comes back and claims those funds. Since I've worked here, there may have been two or three claims on them. Generally speaking, that money just sits with the clerk.
But the bottom line is, whenever we see yours, you usually bring some money in to somebody.
Right.
That's the safe thing.
Any budget amendments I send, that's because we're collecting too much money.
You're collecting money.
Not too much money, but a lot of money.
Keep on sending them.
But that's just to maybe to reinforce my colleague on my right, when the budget is, we always looking to see, I think, what's coming in to be used judiciously and what's moving out. So, that's, that's, anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Basically, what you're doing, you're recouping all of our expenses and you're getting it back on the tax books.
Right.
Now, our, our, our part is getting it back on the tax books.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, on page 52, we have a budget amendment for the library. They received a donation in the amount of $100, so we are anticipating and appropriating that money. And then, the last budget amendment is for the sheriff's office. This is a reallocation of funds to cover some insurance claims. And that is all I have for you.
Before we leave that, Mr. Ben, can we go back to the first, the first budget amendment? Now, flip back. We left it a little quick. Have anything to do with it? Oh, yeah. Number 16?
Yes, sir.
Could you enlighten us a little bit? Just refresh us, I think.
Right. And again, this is to reappropriate grant money that was on our book from last year to the CDBG DR program. This is still funding from Matthew and Florence. But this is all Matthew, I believe.
It's all Matthew.
Matthew, right.
We do, to get any other dollars above that, that is 16 million. Am I counting those?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. I want to make sure that all the, that we, if I focus on missing any points, that 16 million, are we due to get any other additional dollars, be above the 16?
Well, no, sir, not that I, well, I'll let Chip, I'll let the expert answer that. I'm sorry.
The amount was fully, uh, 18 billion. This was the first.
That's the first 16?
Agreement that the state signed for 16 million, 16, uh, seven of that, 45 million.
So, there's another eight approximately in the pipeline?
Yes, sir.
Do when?
Uh, that's to be determined by the state.
When the budget gets passed?
They have the money. It's good money, it's federal money, but when some of these projects get completed, some of this housing rehab, 80% of it is housing rehab, rest of it is infrastructure projects. You got generators, you got rehab down at Mount Carver site. You've got 2 million GM addition for City of Goldboro. You've got drainage issues in Fremont and Bible.
Okay.
Those are infrastructure projects.
You're going down the road, you're going down the right path there. So, that 16 million, if I'm, just to refresh my memory, the 16 million that's already in there has been.
Appropriated.
Appropriated for the folks' houses and so forth and so on.
Yes, sir.
So, that 16 million is allocated and in place, and all of the folk who have applications in are in that 16 million.
Correct.
So, the other eight million that's on the way is up.
Has not been.
Has not been allocated.
That's right.
And I say that out loud because as we move down this process, I hear you saying that a number of things can be, that can be used for, and if I further understood you right, drainage issues and so forth and so on, is that correct? Is that correct?
That is correct.
On my smartphone, it is smarter than I am oftentimes. After this last hurricane, I had an opportunity to ride around through the southern part of Wayne County, which I represent, and there were a lot of drainage issues. And there were a lot of drainage issues. So, I say this out loud to the folks sitting on the bench. I mean, and any other municipalities that maybe listen to this and might listen to it. I want us to carefully look at drainage issues throughout Wayne County, not just to include the ones that I wrote in and not just to include District 2. But when that other eight million dollars come, there are some real drainage issues that need to be weighed carefully whenever we start to look at the allocation. I'll leave it right there, Mr. Chairman. But I just want to think about that and some of the conversations that we've had with folk over the last year or two. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I had one follow-up. Am I correct? As we, as it was reported to us, that all the properties, homes and everything, buyouts and so forth, all that's been complete from Matthew?
This in the process, separate project, has been a national grant program that the county's running. It's probably 70% completed.
So, here we are, the point is, is that here we are approaching, what, three years since Matthew?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. I won't say anything else because it's been harped about and gripped about since Matthew came about how long it's taken this money to get to the source. We still have people in Wayne County that are suffering from the effects of Matthew. Yes?
You have some people, when it gets down to closing, that has issues with other secondary mortgages, issues with the IRS, things of that nature that would prevent closing from occurring. So, it's not as easy as just, you know, here's an offer, bam, bam, bam. It's, some of these issues take time to work out with the attorneys, and that takes time. You've also got seven properties in Seven Springs, nine, excuse me, nine properties that were identified as state historic preservation sites. And that takes a special MOU with the FEMA and the state's shipload office in order to purchase those homes. That has not been worked out with the state yet.
Yeah, and...
So, that's a holdup there.
Yeah. Well, my point is, it's not that we're not doing anything wrong. I mean, my point is, is that it takes a lot longer to do it. The process is long. But the money was appropriated two years too late. That's my point.
Oh, true.
Okay? That's the point that I want to make, is that if the money had have got here in a timely manner, we wouldn't have been having this conversation. It probably would have been taken care of a year ago. That's the only point I would think, Ms. Chairman.
CDBG has a housing component, too.
Yeah.
It repair, you know, it reverses low, moderate income families that suffered damage and had to pay the rental cost. It does repair, it does replacement homes. All of that is out of the county's hands. That's being run by the state more than a lot.
That's right. Yes.
And Teddy, I have one question.
Yep. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. No other questions under budget amendment number five. Number six is motion to approve the sale of surplus properties at 702 East Down Street, 812 First Street, and 411 Wilson Street jointly owned with the city of Goldsboro as requested by the city of Goldsboro. And that's on page 56 through 69, if there's any questions.
Did the city already put on that?
Yes, they did. The approval dates are on the memo, so it was in June and August. And they've sent me several requests, and I'm just catching up on some of their requests. All of those, you can see they're about half of the tax value, which is pretty common for the city of Goldsboro. That's their policy, is they won't accept less than half the tax value.
And then we would go to county managers' comments, board commissioners, committee reports and comments, closed session. And then again, we will adjourn here by 11:00 AM. And we will read adjourn back at the probation and parole building on George and Spruce Streets at 11:00 AM. And we'll have orders there for lunch.
Those steak sandwiches?
Those steak sandwiches. Chicken sliders, so...
And you call that lunch?
There's chips. Chip, maybe a water. But no, there'll be, there'll be some refreshments there after the ribbon cutting. So, we'll adjourn here and then read adjourn down there.
Any close session?
Yes, to discuss matters concerning the location and expansion of businesses or industries in Wayne County and to consult with your attorney, or attorney-client privilege.
We should go to a close session now.
I don't think this will take long.
Yeah.
Motion, I'll vote.